I'd like to call the organizational meeting of Board of Supervisors to order. We'll do the pledge once we get into the regular meeting. I need to appoint Chief Deputy Clerk at this time. Anybody have any nominations?
I nominate Ms. Simpson.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So be it. Then the rest is the determination of a tiebreaker. Is there any desire to change this from any past?
We talk about this every year. Are we required to deal with this every year?
No.
Can we dispense with, can we take this off of so we don't have to do this?
Yes.
Can we get it off of the template so we don't have to do this?
Absolutely. Works for me. Any objections?
Nope.
All right. The 2020 regular meeting schedule. Move to approve it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was that a yes or a grunt circle?
Of course it was a yes. Kind of screwed would vote against the meeting schedule.
Moving right along. Review, annual review of the bylaws.
We've got no recommended changes.
We do have a recommended change.
There's one. Yeah.
I didn't recommend a change.
I had a recommended change.
Now, is, what is bringing that about? Is that storage capacity or what's the, why are we concerned about that?
Largely storage capacity, yes. And the media on which older meetings were recorded are, I mean, we're still storing like cassette tapes that we can't even really find something to play them on or guarantee that they're going to be protected from weather and still be usable. So there's a physical storage component to it and there's a file storage component to it for like audio and video that we're recording now, storing it on the server because of the file size.
How does that affect Library of Virginia? Any issue there?
Ironically, there are no record retention requirements for audio and video files. You can delete them the next day if you want.
Right, so their Library of Virginia recommendation is retain zero years after the recording is superseded, meaning once the minutes are adopted by the Board of Supervisors.
Do I have a motion for such?
So we still want to, we still want to keep them for five years?
There's safety in keeping, keeping them at least for five years because invariably if there's a challenge, somebody says your minutes weren't accurate or there's some sort of dispute, or I myself have gone back a couple of times because of the minutes were a little bit ambiguous and I wanted to see what was actually said.
At five years, are we up to a little more modern storage than that?
Yes, everything in the last five years.
It's not easy to say three years ago.
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for five years. Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And let's see. Any schedule of, okay. Next one is appointment of board members to various boards, commissions, committees, and organizations.
I'd recommend we just keep the same assignments.
Okay. There's actually two minor changes there. One, we've spoken to the planning commission and they would be fine with us going to, when requested, a board representative be at one of their meetings rather than being there on a regular basis. And then pretty much the same thing for the Fire Chiefs Association. I've gone down to quarterly with them and talking with Jeff Madonka, he'd have no problem going to as needed. So I'd recommend those two changes.
Okay. And of course you pick up the...
Yeah, there's some switching because of your chairmanship, obviously. What you didn't say is, are you volunteering to continue on the planning commission or are you seeking?
I was actually volunteering to not be.
That's what I figured. You stopped in the middle of the sentence, that's why. I'd like to make a recommendation that under the stipulation that there'd be, there might be several boards and commissions where our attendance should be on an as-needed basis or with the consultation of either the chair of that body or whatever, rather than a, you know, attendance at every single meeting, that Mr. Johnson take over the planning commission duties to, in collaboration with the chair, attend, attend, that's in, such that you don't, the chair can release that responsibility if...
That would be, be fine with me.
And I didn't hear any objections or didn't feel anything.
Oh, no, no.
Didn't have an eruption next door?
That's right, so, okay. Any other changes anyone desires? All right. In that case, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. In that case, that would conclude our organizational meeting and I will call the regular meeting of Board of Supervisors in session and please join me in pledging.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one change to the agenda and that would be removing 3A, the service awards. Any other additions or additions to the agenda? Here none, I've taken...
We do approve as modified.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Presentation and certificate of appreciation for Maggie Samra. Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I, Larry broke my computer, so, sorry. He's working on it. Chairman of the members of the board, Maggie Samra is here to receive a certificate of appreciation from the Board of Supervisors. She's going to be recognized for her service on the county's Economic Development Authority and I believe she was chair for a couple, couple rounds going on, so, Chairman, Maggie's back there.
I can't hide that. Let me see what officially says here for Maggie, but I personally would like to say thank you. I remember when you came on the EBS and you contributed greatly over the years and I truly appreciate it. This is in recognition of your outstanding contributions to the economic development authority, thereby promoting economic well-being and quality of life in Orange County.
Thanks, Maggie.
Congratulations. Thank you, Maggie. We will miss you. Smile to the camera there. And Rose, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Just to thank you for all you've done, who have been able to do what we do and have supported me and other people. Thank you for your service.
Ms. Chairman, if I could add a word as well. I'd like to specifically thank you for participating in all of those very long GWAT meetings that went on for multiple years. Those were painful but productive sessions, if that's, if that's an accurate description. But the...
That's not a good description.
Yeah, but we, at the end, we accomplished what we set out to do in terms of creating that small area plan and had it adopted, so it paid off, but it was long and hard work and we covered a lot of territory. So thanks for your indulgence in those. Those were all extra meetings above and beyond the normal things that we sign up for and so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We will, we will miss you.
All right.
Triad award.
Yes. Next, we have the presentation of triad awards and Mr. Fring is going to officiate over that.
First of all, I'd like to thank our Sheriff Mark Amos for bringing Deputy Kessler on board. The fact that he has been working closely with you and the rest of your deputies has made a huge difference in terms of what's, of what services we are providing to the community. I have the awards here and the citation was pretty long, so I've asked Deputy Kessler to sort of come on up here and make the short, and Mark, why don't you come on up here too since these are your guys? And first of all, the, this is a seniors in law enforcement together, above and beyond for exceptional service to the senior community, to Mr., to Deputy Richard Bowen. Do you want to come on up here? And Ron, would you give him a sort of a summary of what he did?
Yes, sir, I will. Later, in the later half of this year, Deputy Bowen responded to a complaint from one of our female senior citizens who began to describe to him that she may have been a victim of a internet scam. She had been asked to send $5,000 in cash through FedEx to someone who claimed to be in Texas, but asked to send that money to someone in North Carolina. In addition to that, she also responded by sending a $150,000 personal check. This was a romance scam and it was designed to make the suspect look like he was in business and needed help with his business. Deputy Bowen, through his investigation, realized that this crime had been committed by people who were outside the country and he also realized at that point that it was beyond prosecution. However, at the end of the day, before he went home, he made contact with myself at the sheriff's office at Triad and over the next 12 hours, he and I worked together to see if we could figure out where this money went. At the end of the day, we discovered that within the next 12 hours, this money would probably be gone if we were able to locate the money in North Carolina. Deputy Bowen, at that point, came in on his own time and he initiated an offense report, got that offense report signed off by one of the supervisors and then faxed that report to the fraud investigator in North Carolina. We were hours short at that point of being able to save that money. But based on his actions and the fact that he took the extra step to go above and beyond that this lady's finances, she was able to recover $130,000 of the $155,000 that was lost. This was approximately two-thirds of the life savings. So Deputy Bowen definitely went above and beyond and had it been good for his actions, she would have lost a lot of her money.
Deputy Bowen, thank you very much for that and the citizens really really appreciate that kind of support for the great job. All right.
Next, Joanna Hopkins. Go ahead.
Deputy Hopkins responded to a call for a domestic situation in the county. When she arrived on the scene, she encountered an elderly female who was wheelchair-bound, who had, was living at this residence. Initially, she had been in Florida in an assisted living center where she was being well taken care of. Family members traveled to Florida and convinced this lady to come back to Orange County to live with them, primarily for the reasons of being able to use her bank account and her finances to pay their bills and take care of themselves. The lady, once she was up here, realized that she wasn't being properly taken care of and called 911. Deputy Hopkins arrived knowing that she found that this lady was living in unsanitary conditions and was being verbally mistreated. She also discovered that they had released her of her cell phone, which left her unable to call for help. Over the next few hours, Deputy Hopkins contacted Adult Protective Services. She contacted myself at Triad and she also contacted victim witness. She was able to organize all three of those entities together over the next few hours to come up with a plan to assist this lady. By the next afternoon, we had a plan in place that actually assisted this woman the next morning, being on an airplane, going back to the assisted living center that she was at in Florida and taken care of. And again, had Deputy Hopkins not taken the extra step to contact all of those entities and bring them together to try to give a plan to help this lady, she would still be in those conditions. So we believe that she has definitely deserved this award.
All right. Thank you very much. No, let's get, let's get him in here. His people. Thank you. Okay. Well, we have one other and we don't, unable to present it to him, but I'd like to at least address what it was about.
Investigator Lasco received a call from Adult Protective Services concerning a female who was actually in a hospital in Tredigsburg complaining that she was a victim of financial exploitation by her family. Investigator Lasco was signed into the hospital, took a report, and at the end of taking the report, he asked the lady, if I find that a crime is being committed here, will you prosecute? And her response was, no, this is, this is my daughter, I don't want to prosecute her. Investigator Lasco realized that from a criminal prosecution point, he might be at a dead end, but at the end of the day, he brought the case to the attention of Triad and over the next few hours, and actually, actually over the next week, Investigator Lasco and Triad worked together on this case. And at the end of it all, we were able to remove the lady from the premises, we were able to get her daughter off of her power of attorney and, and actually going so far as to finance a car in the grandmother's name and payments were being taken out of the account she didn't know about. So because of what he did, we were able to remove her from the situation, we were able to get a power of attorney done to put her back in control of her finances and out of the environment that she was being verbally abused in and into a caretaker facility where she was much better taken care of. And Investigator Lasco not taking that extra step to try to get all that together, this, you know, she would still be in that situation. So we definitely believe he deserves an award for bringing all his resources together.
You want to take your line?
I might give it wrong.
Good, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Fring. Okay, moving along, consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. New business, request for a letter of support for Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services grant funding. Ms. Simpson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the annual request that you receive from the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services Board, their executive director. RRCS is requesting a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors for a grant application for them to purchase six 15-passion, passenger vehicles and one modified minivan, all vehicles which they would use in their various transportation programs. Again, it would just be a letter of support, the draft letter of which is included in your packet, and it would not impose any financial commitment from the county. So if the board is supportive, I'd look for a motion to send the letter of support to...
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moved unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is an award of the contract for driveway installation at the Barbersville P-25 tower site.
Good evening. In front of you, we have an award for contract for driveway installation at P-25 tower site in Barbersville. A bid was released on November 14th that was advertised on the county website, EVA website, and in the Orange County Review. The county only received two responses. It is recommended that staff award a contract to synchronize construction since they were the lowest responsive bidder. This contract would be for $164,709.25. Funds are available in the contingency fund line, which will be transferred to the public safety communications site improvement line.
Question for you, within this contract, is there a time period, okay, that's clearly stated in there?
It is to change due to weather, but we did state that we would prefer it to be done by April 1st. Aaron is in charge of determining what constitute working days and things of that nature to make sure that they're on site to get it done.
Okay, very good.
How much was the, the other bid, how much was it for?
It was, what is it different? It was $196,577.
Any other questions? All right, being none, I would look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, thank you very much. All right. Old business, I don't believe we have any. Department Director, Director Constitutional Reports, tax relief for the elderly and handicapped income and net worth tables. Ms. Pope.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As indicated in my memo, I'm requesting that the board consider raising the net income and net worth requirements for tax relief for the elderly and handicapped. The last change was done in 2011. Currently, the net income is $40,000, the net worth is $90,000, which does not include their home and up to two acres. I've resourced a few of the surrounding counties as, as on the handout, except for one locality. Most of our surrounding localities have a maximum income of $50,000 and net worth limits of $50,000. This is just an excellent program that helps our seniors and handicapped citizens and I really feel like this would be a necessary improvement to the program.
Any questions for Ms. Pope?
In that case... Let me do ask one question. I think I know the answer, but is this an either or? I had a case a couple of years ago and as I recall, I forget which way it went, but their, their, I think their net income was under the amount, but their, because of their home, their net worth was just a tick above it.
Yeah.
And I've forgotten how we finally reconciled that, but I just want to be clear, how you would administer this as a, do they have to check both boxes or is it either or?
They have to qualify on both ends, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And this is just the initial stage is because it's a, it's a redu, it's a, it varies with the, with the, yeah, okay.
Very good. Just with that...
You want a motion to...
Motion to approve her request?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Juvenile Domestic Relations Court Advisory Council. Stephanie.
Good evening, gentlemen. Last fall, the administration office received correspondence from Judge Morris of the Juvenile Domestic Relations District Court, expressing his interest in starting a conversation about establishing a juvenile and domestic relations advisory council within Orange County. I had the opportunity to meet with Judge Morris earlier this month and get a little more information as to what he intended this council to do, who he wanted to be on it. And it's my understanding that his intentions are to essentially broaden the conversation within the community, to try to balance community perspective with the procedural aspects of the court. J.D. in our court has done a lot of times, most of the time behind closed doors, and he really wanted to be able to facilitate a space for folks who are impacted by the directions from the court to talk, talk about case studies, maybe take trips to prisons to visit how things are being done and really just broaden that conversation. The types of folks that he wanted to potentially participate on this advisory council are folks like our Office on Youth, RCSB, Services to abused Families, the probation office, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and then representatives from both towns in the county. The code allows for up to 20 members and I believe the judge is allowed to appoint up to five, but he was really just looking to see if the board was interested in establishing this and if I could be of any assistance, helping to reach out to those other nonprofits, be more than happy to do that if that's the direction the board...
All right. Any questions for Stephanie?
Did the judge, I didn't, didn't see it if it was in your memo, how often would he...
He envisioned...
Oh, two to three times a year, okay, that's right.
Two to three times a year. It truly is more of a, hey, what's happened in the last four months? Are there any national trends or local trends that maybe we need to be aware of? Really just to make sure that everyone who needed a seat at the table had a seat at the table.
Actually involves the members visiting institutions and places like that to...
It can, yes, sir, absolutely.
So they have a better reveal for what's going on?
Absolutely, and he envisioned case studies, talking about trends and outcomes and things of that nature.
As far as any funding that is needed for this, where is he looking at that funding coming from, any idea?
He didn't anticipate it really needing any, but no, he did not. And unfortunately, when I investigated the code section, it looks like previous versions of the code expanded it and they retracted it and didn't really amend, amend it to make a lot of sense. So it's really open-ended. To his knowledge, no one else in the state had actually implemented this. He had had a similar advisory council when he was a judge in Charlottesville and just found it really useful from a community perspective.
And is it your sense that he would like for the governing body to appoint this? Because it, as I read the code, he, he actually can do it. He can, he can do it himself. Or does he, did he...
He was interested in that, that, working in conjunction with the board, just so it felt more of a, a community aspect and it wasn't sort of a, you know, vacation court. But we did have that collaborative discussion on, he envisioned being on this board. It seemed to be local providers were directly impacted by what goes on in J.D.'s court. I spoke with Tom and have a suggestion tonight to perhaps at the next meeting, adopt a resolution creating an advisory council with a certain number of members, of which the judge could appoint five, and then creating liaison contact, whoever you think within the county, to work with the judge to, to make that happen.
One thing I would like to make sure that he's at least thinking about is any costs and where that funding would come from.
Sure, I know about that.
Just so we don't have, have a surprise come out of it. Anything else?
Move ahead with a resolution for the next meeting?
Yes, that would be fine. Mr. Johnson? Question? Question, concern?
No, nothing.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead and proceed with that for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. County Administrators Report. No, I'm sorry, excuse me, just a second, I got ahead of myself. County Attorney's Report.
Mr. Chairman, the only matter I have is I've drafted up an employment agreement for an interim county administrator.
Yes.
And I just need a motion to ratify and approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign it.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That was all you had, sir?
That's all I had, Mr. Fring.
Now, County Administrators.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing other than to say, as you all know, this is my last meeting and so certainly want to express my, it's been a privilege serving this board for the last six years, as well as the residents and businesses in Orange County, and certainly want to express my sincere thanks to the county staff for their support and for the friendship, frankly. And certainly want to express my sincere thanks to the county staff for their support and for the friendship, frankly, they've shown me for these last six years. And so it's, it's, it's been a privilege and I will look back on it fondly. Thank you.
Thanks for your service, Mr. Brown. All right, it is five thirty. Time for public comment. Anyone here from the public that would like to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have one individual signed up. Cheryl Pushman, one six two zero six Madison Run Road. If you could come to the podium, please.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not really familiar with this, so just bear with me, I'm nervous.
Not a problem.
Okay, gotta say that.
We are.
We don't bite.
Oh, well, you look like you bite, what can I tell you?
I like to say right off the bat, you know, that you people all in this state, in this town, they're all, are, are great. You are the most friendly people I've ever met. I mean, really, I come from New York.
So the bar was set a little bit.
Not the city, not the city, the Catskill Mountains.
Yes, so, yeah.
Everybody killing everybody for their next dollar and it's just a hard place to live.
All right, so we just recently moved here and we live on that four-way stop where Cox Mill Road and Madison Run Road.
George.
Georg Yancy lives on the corner, but everyone knows that there's two stop signs. And we feel there really should be four stop signs or if they could lower the speed limit from forty-five to forty because the cars race through there and they don't stop and the school buses are going through there. And it's, it's very, it's very, very dangerous. There's two blind hills there and we're just concerned for the safety of the school buses, the people and...
I was just standing out in my yard the other day and, and I, I ride a Harley. And I know that these Harley guys that were coming, they're respectable people today. They're not, you know, they're not dead old angels and all that and whatever. And they're, they're coming down the road there and they got, the leader with four or five guys behind them, didn't see the stop signs until he was through it. And he just looked in his mirror like, oh my, I hope my buddies don't get hit, you know? And, and that, that sign coming from Louisa Ville. That way, it's a Louise, whatever it is, and it's a blind spot right there, man. You can't see that sign until it's too late.
We, it's in District Two, I think we should get VDOT to do some studies there and take a look at it. Because I know the intersection you're talking about.
Yeah.
And it, it, it is trouble, there's no question about it.
It's really scary.
Yeah. And the speeds through there are, you know, not what you would want them to be.
It's supposed to be forty-five, wait, let me finish. It's supposed to be forty-five, but they come through there at sixty, I swear. And we're willing to, because we're on the corner there, we have a carport. So if you wanted to put a deputy or somebody there to sit in the carport, under our carport, seriously. So you could track the speeders without sitting on that corner. I mean, you're more than welcome to, we'll provide the, the shelter for them. Yeah, it's very bad.
When you go out, do it and you stop and you get ready, you gotta go, man, because you don't know if they're coming, where, where they're gonna, they're flying.
Right, because there's a couple of blind hills there too. It's not just a four-way stop where you can see, you can't see.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, I have two issues, so that's the one issue.
Okay, before we move forward with that.
All right.
We're going to have Mrs. Simpson contact VDOT to probably initiate a speed study as well as, if that's appropriate, for additional stop signs. And just so you know, even though we may be friendly, we're a lot slower here than in New York maybe, so VDOT is not...
I thought that, I thought.
Okay. And your second issue?
And I didn't leave my phone number, I would like to leave that on that little yellow card because I didn't leave that. The second issue is the garbage, the trash on the roads. I know there's nothing you could do, I mean, but I want to start and I, I'm really asking for information here for direction. I'd like to start some kind of a volunteer program to pick up the roads. You know, I'm not talking about the main roads, I'm not going to be out on fifteen or whatever, but some of the back roads. If, if I could get some help or some garbage bags or some, you know, fluorescent vests or something. And if I, there's any way I could put a list out if anybody's willing to help me, you know, like on a Saturday to do a, a section of a river.
We have the, Virginia has an adopt a highway thing and they will provide bags and pick them up once you get a, a system in place. If you'll give me your name and address and, and I'll, and I'll put it to the Solid Waste Committee that looks at this, okay?
And we have a committee that, that does, helps organize those groups.
Yeah, so I could get involved maybe, yeah. I'm willing to...
That would be wonderful.
I'm willing to donate my time if there's anything I could do. I'm already picking up stuff, you know, I mean...
All right, now, let's, give me your information and, and I will, and I'll put it to the Solid Waste Committee and we'll see what we can do to try to help support that.
Yeah, I just, you know, it's such a beautiful place. Like my husband said, we're from New York, it's a beautiful place, you see the cows, you see the horses. And then you see the trash on the side of the road and it's such a shame. It's God's land. Who would throw McDonald's bags on God's land? I don't get it.
The same people that did it the week before and the week before and the week before.
I know, it's the same people. And, and I'm surprised that the sheriffs aren't catching these people, I don't know what the fine...
He doesn't have that many deputies, ma'am.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly what it is.
What, what are the fines for, I don't even know for littering.
Not enough, not enough.
Not enough, maybe that's what it is.
Yeah, so if you would, go ahead and leave your phone number on that card as well.
Yes.
And you will definitely be contacted.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Surely.
Yes, indeed, welcome.
Welcome to Orange.
Way to live here. All they gotta do is clean up the roots.
Yeah. There's the man you need to see him. But he's the only sheriff we have, so you have to deal with him.
All right, any other public comment? Public comment period is closed, we'll continue with the agenda. We're down to board comment.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to make a couple of comments relative to this being Mr. David's last meeting. And I, he's been here, this month, he'll, he's been here six years and I think they've been a good six years. And I, I think that he leaves Orange County in, in better shape than he found it. And so I want to thank him for that and I will, I'll miss working with him, but life changes and we all go on. And, you know, there's a, there's a beach chair waiting for him. So again, thank him for his work and wish him well in the future and good luck and have fun.
Thank you.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I would second that.
Yep, I echo those comments as well. Highly recommend that beach chair, I, I just had the opportunity to spend a couple of days on one and I, it was, it was tough to get back on that airplane, I'll tell you.
Since Sam brought us paddleboard, so.
There you go.
Excellent. Yep, sir, thank you very much, Mr. David, appreciate your time. All right, next, I think there's no other board comment. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, does anyone have any?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Donald Brooks to the planning commission.
And I'd like to reappoint Jim Hutchison to the planning commission.
Anymore? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Calendar, any questions on the calendar items?
I think he does, but I need to confirm it, so.
Hearing no issues with the calendar, Mr. Attorney, would you please read the...
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion consideration of the appointment for promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body concerning animal control and county administrator. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation, open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating party of the public body with respect to S. power. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel concerning DEQ and school solar. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two thirty-seven eleven eight one, eight seven eight eight of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County that has hereby authorized discussion of four stated matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are enclosed.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.